I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Maplewood Tuesday, August 12, 2025. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Item number five is the approval of the minutes for the July 8, 2025, regular meeting.
Approval of the minutes. Motion to approve them. Second.
We have a motion to second. Any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Item number six is a public hearing. To amend the zoning ordinance is Section 56-204 and 56-232 to allow retail pop-up stores in the CB district and to amend the AB district to allow residential uses. Has anyone signed up for the public hearing?
Not for that topic, no.
Okay. We'll move on to item number B, which is amending the zoning ordinance sections 56-3, 56-72, 56-106, 56-131, and 56-880 to change the definition of a group home and to allow group homes as permitted uses within residential zoning districts. Is there anyone signed up for this one?
Not for that.
Okay. We'll move on to item number seven, which is public comment. Is there anyone signed up for that?
We do. We have representatives from Broadmoor. If you guys would like to come to the podium.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Joe Morsy with Broadmoor Group. Basically, I guess we'll just give another testimony, kind of same of what you already heard, just basically, right now, that parking lot area, the rest stop, we've already heard a lot about it, but the environment just doesn't really feel like it's for intended purpose of a parking lot. It's more kind of like a recreation area where there's drug use, drinking, and basically, people just don't feel safe. We've had residents actually lease with us on a day where it's raining, where there's not a lot going on, come back to the apartment to take another look and everything, get measurements, and they actually backed out of a lease because they saw the parking lot situation right in front of our building, and they just didn't feel comfortable. Basically, we just want everyone to feel safe. So we're in favor of any and all deterrence of loitering, drinking in the area, just hanging out. We just had a bunch of car windows smashed in last week. We've had issues with human defecation. I've had to clean up right in front of our building. The list just goes on, but we also just wanted to give you our input, just what we're observing and the issues that we're dealing with, just like these women were just talking about. So, yeah, if we could get more lighting in the parking lot area, just anything we can do to just make it feel safe and just return it back to its intended purpose of a parking lot instead of what it currently is, which is just kind of a hangout for drug use and just a lot of loitering. And basically, our residents don't necessarily feel safe, and prospective residents are backing out of leases and stuff, and it's just causing us problems and stuff. So we just wanted to give our two cents about what we've observed as well.
What's your occupancy rate there?
Right now, we have 16 units, and we have five occupants.
Two of which stayed from the prior that are on closing.
Yeah.
And then the rest were new, one being a friend of his, and then the other ones, luckily there was no traffic in the parking lot those days.
Yeah.
So I hate for them to get in there and then be very upset that now, hey, you gave me something that wasn't what it was that day.
And I can attest that these are beautiful units.
We'll be happy to show any of you.
Yeah.
We bought it in July of last year, the Broadmoors did, and they put lots of money into it to bring it back to Maplewood, and we just want to fill it up.
Yeah. And we're also really grateful for the Maplewood Police. They've been really responsive with us, and we're really excited to return the space back to the substation. I've been clearing it out the past two weeks. It's almost ready to get some subfloor in, make it look nice.
And FYI, for free. It's free.
Appreciate your cooperation. Do you have any other comments?
Yeah. So, I mean, we're really proud with what we did. We're able to take a building that was in pretty rough shape and bring it back to a level that, as Councilmember Maddox said, they're very nice apartments, but it's still naturally occurring affordable housing. It appeals to a large demographic of folks that want to live in Maplewood. And when I had the pleasure of meeting Amber over the fall, when some of these issues were first coming to light, it came to my attention that this bus stop really only still is standing because it is historic in nature. And as somebody that lives in an historic neighborhood, somebody that also works in an historic neighborhood, I appreciate it, but with it, obviously, it can come some unintended consequences. And I think a lot of the solutions, these longer-term goals, are very noble in nature and will be great for the area, whether it's some sort of restaurant that brings more foot traffic to the area, because we all know, more feet on the street, it's better for everybody. It's a crime deterrent. It's just, it's better for the area. But as far as immediate solutions, if there's anything we can do to really just turn it back into the intended use of a parking lot and a bus stop, I don't know if there's any way to just kind of take the historic structure offline, because that seems to be where a lot of the issues are occurring, and just having maybe the actual bus stop just a few feet up the way from the historic structure. So we are open to ideas. We're open to continuing the conversation, and we really appreciate everybody's help in addressing this issue, because, as Mayor Greenberg said, it is very complex. There's a lot of moving parts here, and we're happy to be part of the solution. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else signed up for the public comment?
Yes. Shannon McMiller of Sugarfix 101.
While you're walking up, if you can chart new territory.
I hear you.
If you could chart new territory as opposed to what you've already said.
Oh, no, this is for something else now.
Oh, okay.
I'm not, I'm not.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that. I'm done with that. You said you're going to work out the situation, so I'm leaving with that. Well, now, I'm just saying about Public Works, if they can come down and clean up down there more often, because they don't come and clean up as they should. We always have a lot of trash down there, and have to always pick up a lot of trash. If Public Works can stop down maybe once a day and pick up the trash that we have down there, because they accumulate a lot, a lot of trash down there. So, I guess that's about it.
Okay.
I have pictures for you, too.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, the parking lot, is it, is it intended use for a specific space or is it simply a public parking lot?
It is a public parking lot, although it is used by tenants in the Broadmoor Building. Yeah. And we didn't discuss it in the work session, but the approximate cost to resurface that lot is $30,000.
Did that include any of the new solar streetlights or anything that I know we've been talking about in other places? Do we have a place that we could put more lighting there?
Staff has only talked about that preliminarily, but after hearing feedback tonight, I think that's something we're going to look more closely at.
Yeah.
Whether that's some of the new solar streetlighting that the Wash U study is recommending or just other streetlighting, yeah.
Is anyone else signed up for the public comment? In that case, we will move on to item number eight, which are announcements. We've got to have something coming up soon.
Krista, announcements. You got nothing?
I got nothing. Yeah, I was gonna, well, I just want to plug the upcoming Ward One meeting coming up on September 6. That is occurring in Deer Creek Park, and so that's going to be at 10:00 a.m. If you're in Ward One, we'd love for you to come and talk with us. And there's obviously Ward Two and Ward Three meetings coming up as well. The Ward One meeting is coming up for September 6. We'll probably get to talk to you again before the Ward Two and Three, but those are September 20th and October 4, respectively.
Ward Two at the Yale Green Space, 10:00 a.m.
Okay. I will move on to what several of you have been waiting for here, which is would firefighter Neff join us in the frontier? I would like to read the resolution. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri honoring and commending Andrew Neff on his retirement from the City of Maplewood after 30 years of service. Whereas Andrew C. Neff began his career with the City of Maplewood as a firefighter/EMT on July 3, 1995, and whereas through excellence in service and demonstrated leadership abilities, he has risen through the ranks of the department, and whereas his commitment to innovation and exceptional dedication to community safety led to his appointment as Lead Engineer in 2017, and whereas throughout his 30 years of service, he has shown unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our community, and whereas on July 21, 2008, Andrew Neff demonstrated extraordinary heroism during a sniper attack in Maplewood, Missouri, placing himself in the line of fire to provide emergency medical treatment to wounded colleagues and police officers, and whereas his courageous actions during this incident earned him four Medals of Valor, including the Presidential Medal of Valor from the U.S. Department of Justice, the highest honor in our nation for public safety officers, and whereas he has garnered the admiration and respect of his colleagues and staff, and whereas Andrew Neff concluded his distinguished career and retired from service on July 30, 2025, and whereas the City of Maplewood has greatly benefited from his dedication, heroism, and leadership. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, as follows. The mayor and city council, on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby honor and commend Andrew Neff on his attainment of 30 years of service with the City of Maplewood, and be it further resolved that the city's council thanks him for his 30 years of distinguished service to Maplewood and offers best wishes for a happy and fulfilling retirement. You told that. Okay. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Do you want to acknowledge anyone out there?
My beautiful wife, my beautiful daughter, Emery. Kim, I'm sorry, is my wife. My son, who's not here, he's in New Mexico. He serves for the United, or he's for the U.S. Air Force. He just got back to the States. He was in Japan for three years. My father, Charles Neff, and my mother, Cynthia Neff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I didn't know.
Happy retirement.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The next item is an update by Laney with regards to our Parks and Recreation Commission.
I know, that's a tough one to follow, right? Okay. Okay, cool. I'm up there and everything. All right. Thank you so much, everybody, for having me. My name is Laney Schenkelberg. I'm the chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Let me see, I just go forward there. One more time. Am I pushing the wrong button? Forward. Hitting the, there we go. Okay. So just in case anybody is unfamiliar with the responsibilities of the park board, I've got them up here. I am not going to read through all of them, but what I will cover pretty quickly is our system overview. So Maplewood is very unique with our park systems. We have 10 developed parks, one undeveloped space, which I'll talk about later, and the red bubbles here represent the walkability from residentially zoned areas to our parks. So we have the most parks per capita of any municipality in St. Louis County, and we have some of, I actually believe we have the best walkability of any municipality. There are pros and cons to that. One of the cons is it does a lot of upkeep for our Public Works Department. They do a wonderful job with maintaining our parks in addition to all of their other responsibilities. But as we think about future improvements to our parks, we are thinking about sustainability, both in regards to environmental sustainability, but also sustainability with the staff that we have on hand and with ensuring that we are not making things more difficult on them. So I think most of you should be familiar with the system-wide equity-based master plan that we have in place. This was something that we started up a few years ago to have a long-range plan for how we were going to improve different parks based upon the values that we have in Maplewood and the values of the Parks Board. It is based upon the National Recreation and Park Association model for a system-wide equity-based master plan. So all of the plans that we have for our parks are based upon that model. I included this slide. You can go in here to go and view the plan if you haven't seen it before. So let's talk about the progress, timing and funding. So we are, the city is engaged with GrantMatch to help pursue funding to accelerate this. We haven't seen that acceleration yet, but we have made some really great progress. So Central Park had renovations completed that were unveiled in November of 2025, and thank you to the council for all of your support in making that happen. And then next up, we are going to be doing renovations to the Yale Park, and we're targeting 2026, probably the spring, for completion. The total cost of all of the renovations for our park system, it comes up to about $7 million. A lot of that will be funded through municipal grants, and we're hoping to get additional grants to help fund it as well. But if we're relying solely on the Muni grant, we're talking a park a year at best. So Central Park. This right here illustrates the plan for Central Park. We had a study done. We used SWT to support our master plan. They also supported the design of the park renovations. We also engaged with the community in a variety of different ways, so we had signs that were out, that were posted to solicit feedback from the community. We invited community members to come and talk to us at Parks Board meetings, and then we went out and proactively would engage with folks at the park to get their feedback, because community feedback is critical to us as we make any decisions around our parks. So what we heard from the community is that the equipment could use a lift, and the equipment was really end-of-life-ing, but they wanted to retain the green space that was still there. Also, this park is visited by a lot of families with younger kids, because it is what we refer to as a pocket park, so it is fully gated in, so it's great for families that have small children. So through all of that feedback, we were able to make the improvements. We had, I think, the Mid-County Chamber of Commerce helped host a ribbon cutting, and the city also helped to provide a wonderful unveiling of the park in November. So with the improvements, we have all-new, modernized equipment, and then we were also, we retained the green space, so there's also still wonderful space for families, kids, any visitor, to go out and play in that green space. Next up is going to be Yale Park. So we have been awarded the municipal grant, the county municipal grant, to make improvements. We're going to get, I think, around $400,000, and again, thank you to the city, thank you to Tiffany, Amber, everybody else who helped navigate that grant submission process. Right now, you can see the picture in the lower left-hand corner shows what Yale Park currently looks like today. There's playground equipment, there's seating, there's not much else. So we have spoken to community members. We hosted our last Parks Board meeting at the Yale Park and invited community members to come and provide feedback on what they would like to see. The initial master plan process resulted in this plan that you see here. So we are going to add a splash pad to Yale Park. We are going to add, we're going to renovate all of the equipment there, and then we're also going to provide better accessible pathways into the park space, a better shaded area and gathering space, and then we will renovate basically everything there. We're also going to be looking at the landscaping, what needs to be planted there, things such as that. We have received approval that we are going to get the grant. We will probably break ground at the end of the year, and then we are hoping to be able to unveil the park in spring of 2026. There are a variety of other parks that are also in our master plan, but we haven't quite gotten there yet beyond what's in the master plan, so I'm going to move on from here and talk a little bit about the Park Passport. The Park Passport program was an idea that was brought to us by former Councilwoman Jenny Schmidt. She had gone visiting in national parks and saw they had a passport program, thought it was a great idea to bring it to Maplewood, and this is now on year three. The goal of the Passport program is to help educate any visitor on the variety of parks that we have in Maplewood. What I have found is most of our community members don't realize how many parks that we have and maybe haven't even visited all of them. So this passport, you can pick it up at our library or Richmond Heights Library or either city halls, and there is an event once a month that will take place in parts of our park system, and they're typically hosted by an organization that is part of the city. So I'll tell you about one in a moment, the Fire Department's going to do, but the goal there was to just raise community awareness about all that our parks have to offer, get people out in the parks, interacting with community, and then if you come, bring your kid, you can get a stamp on the passport, and then anyone who has eight or more stamps can enter for a grand prize. This year, we've got a family pass to the Maplewood Family Aquatic Center for 2026, a pass to the Heights, and then a new addition is a pizza party with the Maplewood Fire Department. Here are the upcoming events that we have with the Park Passport. The next one coming up is actually the Saturday, August 16. It is a dive-in movie at the Maplewood Family Aquatic Center. It is being hosted by the Maplewood firefighters, and they'll be featuring Moana 2, so it should be lots of fun. And then you can see the other events we have coming up. The Parks and Recreation Commission is going to host a scavenger hunt in September. We have Junior Firefighter Academy that will be hosted by the Richmond Heights Fire Department. We have Native American Storytelling hosted by the Richmond Heights Library in November, and then we'll round out the year with a library open house, cross your fingers, by the Maplewood Public Library. So towards the end of the year, we'll start planning out what the Park Passport will look like in 2026. It's been a pretty successful program so far, and we appreciate everybody's support on it. All right. Any questions, comments, feedback?
I have a quick question for you. First of all, congratulations on the work that you've done to get the grants, and thank you for the work that you're doing to improve the parks here in Maplewood. I was curious if the park development plans, when they're created, is it typically just grounds and equipment, or is there landscaping included in those funding as well? Curious specifically about whether or not new trees are planted when the parks are developed.
Yes, yes. We consider the holistic experience of the parks, and so there are a variety of different attributes that we consider for every park that are grounded, and is it an equitable space, is it an accessible space, is it sustainable? And part of that is understanding what does the landscaping look like, what should be planted. We've seen, as we've gone from park to park and assessed them, we don't necessarily have all the best plants in all of our parks. Sometimes the plants are not native, they're invasive, so when we are looking to plan those items out, they're not specified necessarily in the master plan. They are specified when we start to tackle the park, and then we get the detailed plan that we usually work with SWT on. But then we're also starting to do more engagement with the Sustainability Commission to understand recommendations that they have around planting as well.
Awesome. Love to hear that. And then also just wanted to submit a thanks for the variety of times made available for all of the events for our residents of all ages to be able to come and join the parks activities.
Oh, thank you. I will give credit to Tiffany for that one.
One question for me. First, thanks for the update and the work. On the fourth or fifth slide where you had the entire list of all the parks and the budget there, are those in prioritized order?
They are as of now, but we may revise them. Like, I already was taking a look at this earlier, and I'm like, do we really want to wait until the very end to do the Yale Open Space? We're probably going to bump that one up.
Okay. Thank you.
I was going to, I thought Deer Creek and Kellogg Park, both limitations based on when MSD is going to do major work.
They do. Yeah, so that's a consideration as well. Also, they're in floodplains, so that's a consideration, too, but we would not do Deer Creek until MSD finishes their work, because we would just be tearing it up twice.
Yeah.
And also, the city hall, park space, obviously, we're hoping that we have a project going on here that will need to coordinate the landscaping and any green space with. Unfortunately, you can't do too much planning right now unless it's in the front of the building.
Okay, gotcha. What we will likely do, because I don't think this has been reprioritized in a bit, is we'll take that for the next Parks Board meeting, and we'll look at reprioritizing the next ones that will come after Yale Park, so that we're coordinated with any other work or dependencies.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Laney.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm so glad you can still pick up the passports.
So we'll move on to item number 10, unfinished business. Bill 6284, final reading, re-adopting, establishing, and making public a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Okay, Bill 6284 is approved as Ordinance 6078.
And under new business, Resolution 25-36, authorizing the city manager to purchase duty and training ammunition from Sunset Law Enforcement in the amount of $15,714.88.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is this purchase, how long will this supply last? Do we know?
One year.
One year, okay.
Said one year.
All right.
A lot of bullets.
Yeah. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Resolution 2536 is approved.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 25-37, authorizing the city manager to enter into a five-year lease agreement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase of 17 Taser 10 conducted in 2025. Energy Weapons in the total amount of $129,061.80.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. This will be divided into five payments. And it's a lease agreement, so what happens at the end of the?
Resign it?
We enter into a new lease agreement.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Is the X-26 just end of life? Like, it's discontinued for some other reason or time for a new upgrade?
For your phasers, your energy weapons?
No, the X-26 says they've stopped production. That's what we carry now. So, we can't get batteries, we can't get parts anymore, they're not producing anymore. No more software upgrades, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
When will they come out with the Exxon 11 and 12 and 13?
I don't work for them.
How long is this? This is fairly new technology, so we expect it to be valid for at least five years.
Yeah, so, and I do believe that the lease will, if there's upgrades, just like our body cameras, and if there's upgrades in the technology, we're covered under that. So, the lease covers battery and other things as well, cartridges, software upgrades, training for instructors is included in that lease as well. So, there's a lot of extras in there, it's just not the tasers as well.
But you're not doing the VR training?
That is included as well.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Homa?
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Resolution 2537 is approved.
Next item is Bill 6285, adopting the records retention schedules published by the Missouri Secretary of State and authorizing the destruction of city records in accordance therewith.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. With regards to digital retention, as long as we have room on our server, will we be keeping digital files?
For the duration required by the state schedule. That varies depending on the record, yes. Currently, we keep everything always digitally and on paper. And we have exceeded our capacity to retain all those documents, so we'd like to follow best practice and state guidelines.
Well, when do you think we'll be transitioning from retaining paper files to all digital?
I have already started.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions about this? Voice vote, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Second reading, Bill 6285, adopting records retention schedules published by the Missouri Secretary of State and authorizing the destruction of city records in accordance therewith.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The third and final reading will be held at the next city council meeting. Next item is Bill 6286, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 30, Human Relations, Section 30-19, definitions to update terminology and add new definitions. Section 38-8, unlawful acts prohibited to expand protected categories and adding new sections 30-30, employment discrimination prohibited, and 30-31, discrimination by contractors with the city.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Looks great.
Yep, next.
Do we anticipate that there's going to be any other preemptions by our friends at the state and federal government?
No comment.
And enforcement is not through our municipal court?
Correct. So, we will publish information on our website encouraging people to contact the city and we will direct them to the appropriate resources.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading. Bear with me one second here. Amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 30, Human Relations, Section 30-19, definitions to update terminology and add new definitions. Section 38-8, unlawful acts prohibited to expand protected categories and adding new sections 30-30, employment discrimination prohibited, and 30-31, discrimination by contractors with the city.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Third and final reading will be held at our next city council meeting. Next item is Bill 6287, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Center for Advanced Skills Training in Law Enforcement to provide law enforcement training services.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion, any questions? Will this, will the training, since it'll be multiple jurisdictions, I assume that there'll be some coordination of, like, emergency events in that between departments?
No, this doesn't concern emergency operations. This is strictly a training facility. And basically, we're just entering an agreement that we can use this facility. And it's kind of a pay-as-you-go. So, if we want five days of the shooting range, we'll pay accordingly. And obviously, we've budgeted for training this year, so we would stay within that. And then, as they build new facilities, the range is the only thing that's open right now, but they'll have the de-escalation, training, scenario rooms, and drone training facilities there. But it'll be a pay-as-you-go, basically, facility.
And we were doing some of the training last time at Webster and I assume other locations, so this will consolidate that?
Correct. We still use Webster PD in emergency situations if we have a new hire and we need to train them right away. But a facility like this in O'Fallon would be something where we spend a full day of training, like two shifts, the next day will be the other two shifts, and support staff as well. Just broader range of functions that this range has. Webster is a four-lane indoor 50-yard range. This is 200-yard range.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for? Okay. In that case, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Center for Advanced Skills Training in Law Enforcement to provide law enforcement training services.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The third and final reading will be held at our next city council meeting. The next item is Bill 6288, first, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 50, traffic and motor vehicles by adding new section 50-97, golf carts and low-speed vehicles.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. And so, my understanding is that they're going to, they're required to have liability insurance, a driver's license, all the safety features.
Correct.
Have we designated exactly which roads they, as opposed to just stating the criteria?
Go ahead, Jim.
We specify the speed limit of the roads, so it's any road that's, I believe, 25 miles an hour or lower.
Between 25 and 45, correct?
No, they can cross a road that's over 25. But they can only operate on roads that are 25 or below. And then, they can cross roads that are 30, 35, 45. They can't cross a road that's 55. Not that we have any.
So, the, currently, prior to creating this language, there's just not been much that could be enforced due to lack of language existing?
Technically, I think that they're prohibited without the permission. State law gives the city the ability to permit the use of them, but without state or ordinance permitting them, they really would be, I would think they'd be prohibited. But this will properly regulate them so that we can enforce the requirement for all the safety equipment, ensure that it's a licensed driver, et cetera.
Sure. Yeah, I guess what I was getting at more is just what the motivation was to create. The language was to create greater space for people to use the vehicles or to create more restrictions around use that's currently happening?
Amber probably knows the history better than I.
To create regulation, period. So, we know we have golf carts on our streets. And we get questions often, are these allowed? Who's allowed to drive them? Under what circumstances are they allowed to operate them on city streets? And we don't have anything in place to be able to respond to that, to enforce them, any regulations on them. So, this is to provide clarity about what is allowed and under what circumstances they're allowed.
And the clarity we were just deciding today is, yeah, sure, we're allowing them.
With some guidelines.
Yeah. I understand that. I'm not sure I love it. I don't know if I want golf carts rolling around. This thing's so large.
Yeah, I mean, this is intriguing.
And they're not registered, are they? I mean, we have a process for, are these golf carts registered somewhere?
We're requiring that it is, yeah, a registered vehicle and you have to be a licensed driver. No, not with the city, but with...
Well, golf carts aren't a registered motor vehicle, are they?
No.
These are unregistered motor vehicles running around our streets with a licensed driver, sure. And insurance.
Yeah, I guess my question is really coming from a place of what was the motivation for making it legal as opposed to prohibited? I do have concerns personally with the experiences I've had all over the city of St. Louis with drivers of golf carts. And I think, you know, here in Maplewood, we have a really diligent police force that will, you know, enforce any ordinances that are put in place. But I think that oftentimes, the association with use of golf carts is...
Intoxicated people.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's a lot of misuse of the vehicles.
I also, last weekend, I was out with my mom. We were walking the dog, not in Maplewood, and like legit, young high schoolers drove by packed in a golf cart on a city street. And I was just like, oh!
I have a 14-year-old son and a couple of the young men that he runs with do the little, what I would call in my St. Charles days, a motorbike.
A motorbike, a motorized bike, yes.
I don't know what they call them now. And so, I don't know if that's a low-speed vehicle, because I bet you they do get up over 25 miles an hour, but it's also...
It's got to have four wheels by definition to be a low-speed vehicle.
So, what are those? Where do those fall?
If there's over 50 cc's on the vehicle, then it's considered a vehicle that's got to be registered.
These are under 50.
But if it's an electric bike, there's no cc's at all.
Got it. So, you're speaking specifically about electric bikes?
Well, no, these are motorized. I think he's talking about the little electric, the electric mini bikes.
Mini bikes.
It opens the door to all these vehicles that I think are more prevalent in Maplewood than golf carts. And I'm wondering, I see this last paragraph of Chief Nyburs' memo that it will come back to us again with additional code clarification around electric bicycles, scooters, and I think some of these other vehicles that are...
I feel like we need more time on this issue. I'm not sure I'm ready to vote on this.
How many people do we think even, like, I see, what I think is just one family who owns a golf cart over in my area. I don't know, like, do we have any kind of guestimates on how many are trolling around Maplewood in general? Because if there's like four people who have them...
I mean, there's someone that uses one on our street, take their kids to the bus stop and back. But the golf cart they have, by definition, I don't think is used for golf purposes. It's got big tires. It looks more like the UTV the fire department has than a golf cart.
Fun.
And so, I don't know where that falls by definition. It's under 3,000 pounds and has four wheels, so it's a low-speed vehicle for sure. But I wouldn't, I don't think you'd drive it on a golf course. I'm just curious if we're going to require people to insure electric bicycles that you can get for $200 on Amazon and like if that's where we're headed, I'm curious about whether this makes sense or not as well.
I think...
Also, just for clarification, I was talking about, like, I said they're all more like dirt bikes. They're little motors. You can hear them running around, and I see them all the time, and they're all into them.
But they're under 50 cc's, so they're not registered by the state.
Okay, so, and we don't have any say on that? That would be a different regulation, but a lot of cities are regulating those small... Tuck that away for another day then. I think we need to address that. So, that's... We're trying to deal with golf carts right now. Certainly, ATVs, UTVs, and the off-highway recreational vehicles, those are still prohibited. Anything that can go over 25 mile an hour is prohibited. And then, we were going to address, work with the police department and address the, not so much the e-bikes, but those mini electric.
I just have some concerns about the language the way it is, and I would recommend that it receive more work before passing.
Agreed.
Well, I like it the way it is.
Yeah, I...
The, you're not going to, people aren't going to stop driving them if we make them illegal. People don't stop driving their ATVs. As a matter of fact, we have a business on Greenway that uses an ATV all the time.
But don't you think that's because it's the Wild West? There is no rule?
Our school district uses a golf cart.
But the, what's nice about having the regulations, I'm not concerned about a 16-year-old with a driver's license. I have seen kids driving them. And so, I would much rather the police be able to stop them and say, look, you got to call your parents because you're not driving this home.
But couldn't the police stop them now because they're not technically legal here? Are they not technically legal here or are they not technically prohibited?
I think it's ambiguous.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm okay with this as it is. I am interested to see the e-bike. I mean, e-bike, you take the battery out and you pedal it. Do you need to insure that? Because it's still an e-bike. I think we're, it's a slippery slope to me that I'm interested to see. If we pass this, I think the next step is e-bikes and scooters. And I feel like that's a different ballgame than a four-wheeled vehicle that has, you know, no one riding a bicycle without a battery, which is still an e-bike if you take the battery out, wants to get insurance for that.
So, to clarify, sorry, you're recommending a separate ordinance for that as opposed to amending the one that's here?
No, it would be separate. Based on Chief Nyburs' memo, there'll be something coming to us in the future about all these other vehicles that are not golf carts and not covered by this ordinance. But I think that's where we're headed.
Keep in mind that I think the sense of urgency is just to clarify the ambiguities here. But especially when we get to the point where we're creating regulations for e-bikes and those type of things, we can revisit this, but at least we'll have some information at that point in time based on this ordinance, whether there's a problem or not, that, you know, we've solved some problems, are we going to create any more? And we can revisit and amend this, you know, this particular ordinance.
Would it be possible prior to the final reading of this to get some more information from Chief Nyburs on what the experience has been with stopping people who are driving the golf carts?
Well, certainly, that's why we don't, you know, pass it tonight, obviously. But yeah, getting more information wouldn't hurt at all. So, if you can...
Do you have information?
Do you want to know specifically about to date what our experience has been with stopping golf carts?
Yeah.
John can speak to that.
To my knowledge, up to this point, I don't believe we have any experience in stopping golf carts. Obviously, I'm not on the street. My office is right there, but I don't get a lot of reports of problems with golf carts. I know we've had a few people call in and ask what is the law on that. That's pretty much what this discussion is about. But as far as like while driving in a golf cart, we have not experienced that, to my knowledge.
I think what I want to avoid is someone letting their 12-year-old kid riding a golf cart down the street, get hit by a car. And then, then we'll wonder why we didn't have an ordinance.
Well, yeah, sure. And it sounds like this ordinance achieves that issue. I was just curious if we're experiencing that right now.
I'm wondering, like, there's just not enough of them to worry about.
I'm wondering, like, is just not enough of them to worry about?
Yeah, that's what, do we have any sense? It says, based on citizen interest, increasing citizen interest. Do we have 12 people that have asked and two people that actually have them? Because it seems maybe like overreached to put an ordinance in place, if that's what we're talking about.
We've been, to my knowledge, receiving, been receiving pretty consistent inquiries since COVID. There was definitely an uptick in the number of minors who were operating golf carts in that time. Some of those families are no longer in our community. But I think we've consistently received a couple of calls a year. Why do we allow this? What is allowed? Just seeking some definition on that. I don't know that we've received any calls from owners of golf carts.
I'm sure not.
I think they're familiar with the loophole that they can exploit. But this has been something that our community resource officers have been asking for since I got here. It's been just raised to me, like, hey, by the way, could we do this? And I, I didn't see a reason why we, why we shouldn't. We could, if you prefer, since we've talked about bringing forward the UTV, ATV, and then the, the e-bike and the e-scooter. And, and the latter, we feel is very important right now as we're coming up to the GRG trail being installed in our community. And we do have expectations that, obviously, there's gonna be some speed limit concerns around there and vehicles on the trail, coming off the trail onto city streets. We, we could hold this back and bring it back, so you could evaluate all three of those together, if that would make a difference to you.
I'd be interested, is to see, yeah, what the others say, or what, what the approach is for electric bikes and scooters. I'd be interested to see that before voting on this, if possible. But, if we need to vote, I'm okay with that, too.
Yeah, my, my true question was really just about all of the vehicles that would be encompassed inside of this ordinance. And so, if there's discussion around creating another one that includes some of those other vehicle types, that would be, that would be fine.
You know, I, I liken this, this is akin to, we had, we put in these really cool crosswalks, like in downtown Maplewood. And the police couldn't do anything about people violating that because we didn't have any ordinances around their ability to do that. So we had to pass an ordinance so they could actually give somebody a ticket that violates it. But this, we're, we're giving at least some kind of mechanism to the police to say, you know what? There's four kids on that golf cart, you know? I'm gonna tell them to pull over and get them off the street, right? Because they should not be driving any slow-moving vehicle at all on public streets. So, in my eyes, it's more of a safety thing, right? You're not gonna tell people they're not, I mean, if I went, I wouldn't care what the ordinance has said here, I would go out and buy a golf cart, because they're a slow-moving vehicle. They don't, you know, you can't, can't do much with them, and they're great to get around. And I, I do know a couple people that have them here, but they're operated by adults, not by, by kids, so...
I mean, I think if I had my druthers, I would be, I would be more interested in, well, I'm a little ambivalent about it, but I, I'd be fairly anti-golf cart. I don't, I don't see the point in a 1.8 square mile city of golf carts. But I, but, if that's, you know, I'm getting the flavor that that's probably not what we're thinking. So, you know, I'll get on board with this, because like you said, at least it gives us some sort of framework to limit it. And I'll do that with a good faith that we will, as a group, revisit this. And I think we're gonna be forced to with the two-wheelers anyway.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Can we refine it?
Yeah.
Sure, but I, I think that it's nice to give them an enforcement mechanism so that they can, you know, stop one and say, look, you do not belong on this. Call your parents and have them come get you, you know?
I, I think you brought, you brought up a very valid point, Sean. I'm not sure I see anything in here that, that makes, if, if you have eight people hanging on a golf cart...
Right.
Which, you know, could very well happen, that's, that's not safe.
You could probably just put something about, you have to use it as intended. There's probably, on the manual of every golf cart, probably says limited to passengers, yes.
You're, you're limited to the number of seats that it has.
Okay.
Right.
Each seat has to have a seatbelt, blinkers, headlights, brake lights, turn signals.
Yeah.
And these are common among many of the neighboring municipalities.
Okay. And, and we do have a golf cart dealer here now in, in Maplewood.
Been here for a while, yeah.
It, it could change things. But, anyway, we've probably beat this to death. We have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Second reading, amending the code, Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 50, Traffic and Motor Vehicles by Adding New Section 50-97, Golf Carts and Low-Speed Vehicles.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The third and final reading will be held at our next city council meeting. And in the meantime, are we looking for information from our police department on the frequency of, of infractions or anything like that?
I'm not sure information about how it's happening in Maplewood is all that helpful. I almost, I'm not asking anybody to go do this research, but if I wanted information, it would be like, well, how does this impact the community when it goes from, nobody really knows what the rules about golf carts are, to you hear from City Hall that, hey, they're allowed? What does that look like? Like, if all of a sudden we have 25 golf carts running around Maplewood tomorrow, do we love it? Do we hate it? I don't know.
I mean, I think if there's an ordinance in place that helps regulate it as that continues to, to increase, you know, that's one thing. I, you know, I also don't think, you know, I'm just putting my thoughts out here. I, I don't think it's super likely that, you know, there's gonna be a massive influx at any point in time. Golf carts are pretty expensive, and they're, they're more expensive to get outfitted with blinkers and turn signals and all that.
Yeah, it's like when we passed the chicken ordinance, remember that? Everybody thought everyone was gonna get chickens, there was gonna be, you know, 4,000 people with chickens in Maplewood, and what, maybe 20 or 30, and we don't even keep track of it.
Yeah, but they all live within a block of me.
I got a bunch by me, though. I mean, I'm just saying, there's like four or five people with chickens around me.
You know, I mean, everybody's, we're all, we can't pass this, because everybody's gonna get chickens.
Well, the Airbnb thing was the same thing, too. It was like, if we loosen up the restrictions, every house will be rented, and that didn't happen either.
No, exactly.
I, I catch your meaning, I just think, I'm more curious, like, what does this look like when it, when it goes? I, I don't think what's happened already in Maplewood is particularly relevant.
When we build a golf course here, then...
You mean a putt-putt course?
I think as long as there's safety measures in place, and they're being utilized safe, safely, you know, I don't think it matters what it looks like when there's, you know, 20 or 30 golf carts on the street, you know? Truly, my main concern is just safety of use, and who is using them? Is it adults? Is it kids? And if, if there are kids driving the golf carts, and we say, you know, you, you can't drive them on the streets, and there's, there's even language in here about them being prohibited on sidewalks and parks, we're just thinking about where else we might find them as well, and kind of what resources we have to kind of make them, make them safe.
Well, we'll revisit that at the next meeting. And I'll move on to Bill 6289, which is amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 50, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 50-119, Streets Closed to Commercial Vehicles to Add Roseland Terrace and Le Cleed Station Road.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 50, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 50-119, Streets Closed to Commercial Vehicles to Add Roseland Terrace and Le Cleed Station Road.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The third and final reading will be held at our next council meeting. Next one is Bill 6290, Amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 56, Zoning, Section 56-204, Permitted Uses CB District, and Section 56-232, Permitted Uses AB District to Allow Pop-Up Retail Stores in the CB District in Residential and Office Uses in the AB District.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Looking at the ordinance, the way it's written, my preference would be to take out liquor stores as a allowable use. I think it should require a conditional use permit.
In Section 56-232?
232, item, item two is liquor stores.
That's already part of the code. It's, it's only the bolded sections that are amended.
So that is...
That's currently part of the allowable use in the AB District.
And, that's, this is only for pop-ups, right?
No. So, Section 56-204 is allowing pop-ups. Section 56-232 is expanding the allowable uses in the AB District.
Okay, when, when did liquor stores become a permitted use as opposed to a, a conditional use?
I'd have to look in the code and let you know.
I, I don't remember. I always thought it was...
I think you're misunderstanding. It's, it's a use. It's not a permitted use, not, not, you get a permit, it's just a use that's allowed in the zoning, right? So if they wanted to put a liquor store in, it's an allowable use in this particular district. And then you have to follow the rest of the code, saying, go get your liquor license from, and get it, get a conditional use for it. Right? Because we have, in other zoning districts, you can have a liquor store. And what do they have to do? They have to go, they have to follow the conditional use permit.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, so there is, there's a review process.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's an opportunity for us to regulate the location and, and other, okay.
And I'm assuming I'm correct, is that right? I mean, we're just allowing a use, it's not a, it's not something we have to permit for. It's just a use allowed in the zoning.
All, all of the uses identified under 56-232, 1 through 30, are permitted uses. Those, to serve, or to sell liquor, they still need to get a liquor license. They need to get a liquor license from the state, the county, and I assume the city. So they'd still go through that. But these are the permitted uses. It's in paragraph 31 where we identify the conditional uses, which are the ones that require a conditional use permit.
And permitted by allowed?
Permitted is allowed.
Is allowed, not a permit, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mistakenly thought we were giving up control by making it permitted. But taverns and liquor stores both need to...
Right.
Okay.
Agree.
All right, thank you.
Only paragraphs 28 and 29 are new, which are the bold type.
And the idea that residential uses are located on an upper level, does anyone have an issue with that? I think it's a great idea, because it, it allows landlords to make sure that their facilities are leased. And it brings people, you know, I think it's a good option for, for the, the commercial areas.
Yeah, they do in other cities, no reason to make it a multi-use, that's great.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, Amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 56, Zoning, Section 56-204, Permitted Uses CB District, and Section 56-232, Permitted Uses AB District to Allow Pop-Up Retail Stores in the CB District in Residential and Office Uses in the AB District.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The third and final reading will be held at our next city council meeting. The next item is Bill 6291, first and second reading, Amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 56, Zoning, Section 56, 56-point, dash, 3, Definitions, Section 56-72, Permitted Uses SR District, Section 56-106, Permitted Uses LR District, Section 56-131, Permitted Uses MR District, and Section 56-880, Group Living Facilities to Define, Redefine Group Homes and Allow Group Homes as Permitted Uses in Residential Districts.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, Amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 56, Zoning, Section 56-3, Definitions, Section 56-72, Permitted Uses SR District, Section 56-106, Permitted Uses LR District, Section 56-131, Permitted Uses MR District, and Section 56-880, Group Living Facilities to Redefine Group Homes and Allow Group Homes as Permitted Uses in Residential Districts.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, actually, I have a couple.
Sure.
It, it just dawned on me why we, we don't have the language in here. We took it out years ago, when some temple, I forgot what it was, was gonna move in.
Jehovah's Witnesses?
I don't know if it was Jehovah's or something.
Was that the one at, at Woodside?
Yeah, 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 I guess that was it.
Yeah, it was the Kingdom Hall.
Yeah, and then, so, I guess my, my first question is, why are we allowing it, again?
It's a permitted use. It's a conditional use right now. And what Planning and Zoning has requested is that it be a permitted use versus a conditional use.
Is it, do, do you know the reasoning why they wanna change it from conditional use?
My understanding is they wish to remove barriers to group homes coming to Maplewood.
If you remember when Larch wanted to move in to the Immaculate Conception Campus, there was, that, that was an interesting discussion. There was some misinformation and, and they, they did jump through the hoops, and, and they were approved.
Right.
And then, the next time they came to do the one south of Greenwood there, I don't think there was really any impediment to them getting their approval. So, whether it's, you know, as long, I think it specifies here, as long as it's not alcohol and drug rehab facility, that it's more for developmentally disabled.
It doesn't specify that, though.
I think, I had thought that the, the desire was to make sure that the language didn't create any kind of ADA or discrimination violations.
Well, changing it from permit, from conditionally permitted is not, that's, that's not ADA. That's just, that's just removing us from the, from the decision-making process. I don't know, I don't know how I feel about that.
Well, yeah.
I mean, every, every group home that's come to us, we've, we've approved.
Yeah.
Right, the, yeah, I mean, I don't understand why they would, I'd like to know the reasoning.
Yeah, I mean, it does say that this would, would eliminate the city's ability to regulate the number or location of group, number or location of group homes. So it's not like we're gonna see an influx, but we don't have the ability to regulate, because it doesn't come through this process, like, and we have approved in the past.
Right, who, who permits it? It's the zoning administrator, which is the city manager. Right? I'm assuming that's where the permit would come from.
It does provide for limitations based on distance between 1,500 feet. So, it means you can't have one every, every block, I guess. But...
I, I would like to see it continued as conditional use until I got a, a really good answer from PNC, because I'm just not sure, it's, it's not really a barrier. It's, it is a, group homes in residential areas can, can cause some uproar. So, if, if we move that to the council, we can take the heat for it, you know, rather than...
When you say it can cause an uproar, can you expand on that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, like, when we did the, the one over by the Catholic Church, just with all the misinformation that's out there, why not have them come to the council and discuss their misinformation, so we can set them straight, rather than having our city manager have to deal with that? And, and also, it gives us the ability to, to, you know, limit it. Maybe somebody is applying to, for a group home that, you know, we're not quite sure, you know, or maybe the people in the neighborhood don't want it.
I was just saying, maybe the more important thing is it allows public comment.
That's right.
Which, which if we remove it from it, is, I hadn't really thought about that.
There is no public comment anymore.
It's less about our decision-making, it's more about opportunity for the neighbors to come in and say, yes.
Right, so anything, anytime anything's in front of the council, it requires public input.
You're swaying me over, I'm thinking the same.
And, and just, and the same thing like we do for VRBO, you know, short-term rentals. It's all conditional use that comes in front of us. It gives the op, the public an opportunity to speak about it. So, I, I would prefer to table this until I hear more from Planning and Zoning on exactly why they wanna remove the public part of it.
Is, is staff aware of any applications or any intention?
No. No.
So there's no sense of urgency here? So, so from, from that point of view, I think we should study it more and discuss it more.
Yeah, I just, I think something like this warrants, there is a reason why it's conditional use. And I think, as I've noted and Eric noted, that, you know, you remove the public process out of that. And they can be controversial and, you know, give people an opportunity to speak about it. I think it's the most transparent way of going about it. So I motion to table Bill 6291.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is this a roll call?
Typically, it would not be unless it's specifically in your charter. I, no.
Okay. In that case, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is tabled. Moving on to council and staff reports. Mayor's report. I know that Amber has a long one, so the, the mayors and city managers from Maplewood and Brentwood and Richmond Heights and Clayton and Webster Grove and Olivet got together with the intent to explore opportunities to reduce redundancy and increase efficiencies between our municipalities. And we didn't, you know, draw any specific conclusions, but we started the process. And you can add anything that you want to that in a second when you get to your report. That's, that's my only report. Ward one?
Yeah, again, just the Ward one meeting coming up on September 6th, 10:00 AM, Deer Creek Park. And then that same weekend is the Art Outside Event at Schlafly. And also wanted to, Amber mentioned the Maplewood 101 program coming up. I just wanted to say, my wife did that program last year and had really amazing things to say about it. So definitely encourage anyone to join the program. Amber, can you remind me when that starts?
Starts January 22nd and runs through February 26th. And this winter will be on Thursday nights instead of Monday. And we moved it to the winter because of feedback we've received from people who couldn't register for fall sessions because of obligations related to kids' sports and things like that.
Anything else from Ward one?
Ward two?
Nothing.
Not even National Night Out?
Not yet.
Okay. Ward three?
No report.
Nothing.
Do we have a city attorney's report?
No, we do not.
City manager?
I'll try to keep this brief.
Let me get comfortable.
Okay. No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to cover every item. I will share something that isn't in my report, which is the reason Chief Nyberg isn't here, and we have the pleasure of Major Leclerc, is that he went to Arkansas for our Kalia hearing, which we passed with flying colors. So we are accredited for another four years by Kalia. That being said, obviously, they're.
Four years to build the police station.
Yes, there are findings in their written report about the insufficiency of our police facility, but I would like to congratulate the team for passing with flying colors. You've got all the information about all of our procurement items that are coming to you September 9th. I just want to say that the branding initiative response has been wonderful and overwhelming, and it will be a very tough choice for staff to make to recommend a firm to you. Everybody wants to rebrand us, and they want to do it very elegantly.
Wait, is that going to hurt?
We're, we're really excited about that. So we will have a number of approvals in September for you to review related to all of these outstanding items. Councilmember Homa, you asked in a previous meeting, and our previous city attorney did confirm that the state's new prohibition on source of income does affect what we've put in place with Resolution 23-57 and Code, Section, Chapter 30-19. So we will be bringing forward a recommendation for revising that to conform to state law. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to look at other portions of that tenant bill of rights to see potentially if there are other areas that we'd like to, to beef up and expand, given that this has been in place for a couple of years. So staff's going to be looking at that and making some recommendations. The mayor mentioned our Central Cities meeting. I will say, just to add to that, that each city manager has taken on a piece of further study with each of the areas that we prioritized, and we will be meeting again in early November. I would encourage all of you to attend if you're available, the Mid-County Affordable Housing Roundtable on August 19th. That's at 3:00 PM at Eden Theological Seminary, and that is Maplewood, Brentwood, Richmond Heights, Webster, and Kirkwood, talking about affordable housing solutions and collaborative opportunities. An update to our comp plan approval process, we have added another month to the plan schedule. You were originally going to be approving it after P&amp;Z adopted it in September. We've pushed that to October to allow for more review and feedback from the Plan and Zoning Commission. And then finally, I'd like to recognize some of our outstanding staff who will be receiving Mid-County Chamber Leadership Awards at their breakfast on September 18th. Our Government Leader of the Year is Chief Matt Nyberg, and I think his work speaks for itself. You all have seen how our police department has evolved under his leadership, and we're very proud of the work that that entire department is doing. And for our hometown hero, which is a new award this year that the chamber is giving, Captain Paul Sidlowski from our fire department will be honored, just in, in advance of his retirement from our, our team. And the city also, again, received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Governor, Government Finance Officers Association. So again, we are proud to be recognized for transparency in financial reporting. Any questions about any of those items? All right. Keep it quick.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to hold a closed session to discuss legal matters.
Sorry. Yeah, motion to hold a closed session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, it's a roll call.
Have public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We have an opportunity for public comment. We have one member of the public with us.
Good, okay.
Is anyone signed up? Thank you. At this point, I will again ask for a motion to hold a closed session for legal matters.
Motion to hold closed session?
Second.
Any discussion? A roll call, please.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.